I'd like to call to order the October 1st, 2013 City Council Meeting of Yukon, Oklahoma. If you would please rise for the invocation and the flag salute.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer and we give thanks for this day that we've been blessed with. We give thanks for our families and our businesses and the community we get to share. We ask, Lord Jesus, as we come together tonight, that we can make decisions that are educated and that would benefit the citizens of Yukon, most importantly, that would glorify you, Lord Jesus. We ask that you would forgive us of our sins and bless us meeting in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
Gerba?
Here.
Alberts?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Presentations and proclamations. We have one. Chief Jones, we come forward, please.
All right. This proclamation states, whereas the city of Yukon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas we recognize that fire is a great concern, we also recognize that the homes are the location where people are at the greatest risk of burn injuries, and whereas cooking fires are the leading causes of home fires in the United States. We ask that people be aware of the dangers associated with cooking and working in the kitchen, and whereas people should have a plan for kitchen safety and a fire escape plan. Therefore, I Ken Smith, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2013, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout this city, I urge all the people of Yukon to practice their home fire escape plan and during the Fire Prevention Week 2013, and to support many public safety activities and efforts of the Yukon's Fire and Emergency Services. Signed this day, Ken Smith, Mayor of Yukon, Oklahoma. Chief Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Well, first I'll introduce some of the guys we've got here with us. Let them introduce themselves, as a matter of fact.
Hi, my name's Sergeant Brad Homme, and I've been working for the city for just about 10 years.
Hello, my name is Fabian Gallegos. I've been a firefighter here for going on two years.
Kerry Province, been here 13 years.
And Mr. Mayor, just this year, we're just talking about kitchen fires this year and asked people that they would just, you know, pay extra attention to whether they're cooking and look at some hazards that may be in their kitchens, also to have an escape plan, exit plan for your house. So these guys and the rest of the department be out all next couple of weeks with all the second, third graders in the city, and they'll be with several preschoolers, pre-Ks. So we'll have thousands of kids we'll be looking at for the next few weeks.
Chief, do we have a recent promotion in our presence?
Well, I guess Captain Province is relatively recent, yeah.
Very proud of Kerry.
He is a hometown guy, played for the Millers, and just a great Yukon guy, so we're glad to have him.
Thank you, Chief.
At this point, it's the visitors' section of our meeting. Do we have any visitors here that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Greg Winters, and I serve as the Superintendent Canadian Valley Technology Center. You need my home address?
If you don't mind.
Don't chump anything at me. 6541 Ranch Drive, Piedmont, Oklahoma. Just a mild groan in the crowd. Mr. Mayor and members of the council and City Manager Grayson Bottom, we ask for just a very short time, just a few minutes tonight, to really to come and say thanks to you folks and your city inspectors and all the folks that worked with us. Just a very quick reminder, Canadian Valley Technology Center on May 31st, we got hit really hard by the tornado, I thought it was going to hit Yukon really hard, and it kind of came up and got us and then took a kind of a dog leg right and missed you guys. But I was watching that in my living room at the house in Piedmont. My oldest son's renting an apartment right here as he builds a new home, and we were really more worried about his apartment and him losing everything, and we were really worried about our campus down between Yukon Mustang getting hit. And what happened was the tornado came and they tell me, and I talk to a lot of national folks, it's the worst incident of damage for a technology education center anywhere in the country in the history of career in technology centers. It was all the way back to the 60s. But we had an opportunity to come to Yukon for a while, and all of you in the crowd probably knows that we leased the old John Holt Chevrolet building, and we, in a very short time, in about 70 days, we were able to convert a Chevrolet dealership, former bank building, into a technology education center, and we're really proud of that. We have a great staff, and it's kind of interesting, one of my board members is a firefighter, retired. George Feen is Vice President of our board right now. He lives at Piedmont, but he's a retired Oklahoma City firefighter. And one night we were having a board meeting in June, and I was bragging on our staff about how really great they were and doing a great, great job, and old George to come up with a great analogy. George says, you know, I was with the fire service 25 years. He was captain on the fire service in Oklahoma City. And he said, you know, we'd hire these young guys and train them and get them up and rolling. He said, but to be real honest about it, we really didn't know how good our fire department was till the fire broke out. Well, we were kind of the same way, it was a little different story. I knew we had a really good staff, but I figured out real quick we had a great staff, and a 4.3 mile wide tornado with sustained winds of 335 miles an hour gave us an opportunity to find out how really good we were, too. That was kind of our analogy of a fire department. I thought it was a pretty good analogy, actually. But Grayson and the mayor and council, we wanted to come and say thanks. We had a, we've got a little token. The tokens came from El Reno. I hope you guys are okay with this, but one thing that I want to do, though, I'm really proud of all of our folks. I've got Bill Bradley, Assistant Superintendent over here, and Amy Perkies, one of our counselors, and kind of helped us put together some of the stuff. But I want to call our campus director, Gaila Lutz, up. She has some special comments that she wants to make as we transitioned a Chevrolet building into a tech center here in the last three or four months.
Thank you, Dr. Winters. Do I need to state my address?
If you don't mind, please name an address.
Name, Gaila Lutz, address 224 East Olympic Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. Okay. Yeah, we are thrilled that we were able to find a space that was almost big enough to hold our entire staff and faculty and our programs. We have 19 programs. We were able to get 17 of them in the John Holt building. We, the day that Dr. Winters did the handshake agreement with John Holt, we had, he turned around to me and he said, "You need to call the city manager, and we need to get those city inspectors over here right now." And I remember thinking, okay, don't they come at the end to inspect? But we did that, and that was the smartest move that we made, because everything that we did, they were there to support us, all the inspectors. I can tell you that Grayson Bottom came out, and the inspectors, Mitchell Horton, John Taylor, Tommy Wayne, Dale Layley, and Eric Blaylock, they were all there, all holding our hand along the way, helping us, showing us what we needed to do, giving us phone numbers of people that we needed to contact, so that we could get the elevator inspected, so that we could, you know, make sure that we had done everything just right. They just let us through it, and it was wonderful. So we really wanted to publicly thank them and tell them how much we appreciate all the work that they did to help us do what we do best, which is educate students. We're happy to be here, and we're happy that we're in Yukon and educating students. So thank everyone for all of their support. I also would like to say that the community has welcomed us. The other day Walmart showed up with cakes that said, "Welcome to the neighborhood." It was wonderful. You know, and when you go through something like this, a tornado, that's something that's so devastating, it really is heartwarming to have support and to have people who understand and who show that they care and that they support what you're doing. So we've had just lots of community support. We appreciate all the positive comments and lots of people trying to get us to stay in Yukon, so that makes us feel good. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. If I might just speak for the council just for a moment, we are grateful that Canadian Valley Tech Center has actually moved into the city limits here, and so thankful that John Holt was so accommodating, and, you know, we want to praise our staff for assisting you, and please don't think I'm trying to cut you short, but we are exceeding our...
We have, we, I apologize for that, too. I didn't know we had a limit. Usually when I get to speak, it's an hour and a half.
That's in the school, sir.
No, we have some, we have some tokens that we want to present very quickly, take 30 seconds. One of our staff, Amy, went out. We got a lot of old bricks that came off of the building that went through the tornado. We kind of adopted the Canadian Valley Strong, you know, that is on TV and is on all of these things, and we wanted to make sure that each one of you guys had a little token of our appreciation, and we thought it very appropriate to come, and like I said, thank you publicly for all of the support that we've had. I jokingly told John Taylor particularly, that for a while, I thought John was on my payroll. He was out there helping us and really assisting us all the time, and the other inspectors as well. But guys, we literally could not have done what we were able to do without the great support of all of your guys, really, like Gaila said, really holding our hands and walking us through the process, making sure. You know, Grayson and I go back a long, long time. I mean, I've known Grayson Bottom all my life, and that was the first phone call I made that day, is I called Grayson, and I told him, I said, "Grayson, I gotta ask some help." And literally, within five minutes, Grayson and his inspectors were in the parking lot. We were talking about what we were going to have to do to get that thing going, and you know what? School started August 15th, and that was the day it started, and that's the day it did start, and it would not have started if it hadn't have been for all of you guys and these great inspectors, these staff that you guys have, that you guys charge with the responsibilities. So, Mr. Mayor, I know I'm over the limit, but I wanted to make darn sure you guys knew how we felt about you guys and Yukon and the community. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other residents that'd like to come forward? Please step to the podium, state your name and address.
Rick Kachini with the Yukon Veterans Museum. I'm at 1140 Landmark Drive in Yukon. I don't think I can top our superintendent's great speech about the folks here in Yukon, but I'm going to also follow up with it to say that without the staff, without the council, without all the folks that helped us, all the veterans have asked me to come in and tell you again, thank you for the recent support on our fundraiser, the yard sale. It gave the chance of our veterans to speak to the donors and the people that came in to buy things, and they were able to communicate and tell war stories and so forth, so I wanted to thank you there. It was successful monetary, but more important was the bonding of the veterans and the residents here. Just one other note, Czech Festival coming up. We will have a float in booth and some door prizes. Believe it or not, one of the top door prizes will be a flight over Yukon for two, so please stop by our booth. I think you'll really enjoy some of the flying going on around here. It's a beautiful area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kachini. Do we have anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will recess as the Yukon City Council reconvenes as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all city authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17th, 2013, and B, payment of material claims in the amount of $493,142.37. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as a Yukon City Council. Council Agenda, Item 1 is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17th, 2013, B, payment of material claims in amount of $493,307.56, C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. Appointment of James Montgomery to the Traffic Commission representing Ward 2 as recommended by council member John Alberts. E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for October 15th, 2013, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
Yes, Mayor, this evening, we have a report from Vice Chairman Bob Doggett on the Planning Commission. Bob?
I have some visual aids, but I don't have enough coffee to spread this out.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
I'm Bob Doggett, 2405 Acadia Court. We've lived there 25 years, bought that house back when you could buy a house for what is now the price of a pickup, and have enjoyed that immensely. I'm the Vice Chair of the Yukon Planning Commission. Terry Beaver is with me tonight. Terry is a member of the Planning Commission and a past Chairman of the Planning Commission, and we're here to present our report for calendar year 2012. The Planning Commission works closely with Mitchell Horton, Community Development Director, to ensure that new expansion and development within the city limits occurs in a safe and logical fashion. The Planning Commission reviews plans for new development and zoning changes and to make sure they meet local codes and zoning requirements. We do the study and the research, and when we vote to approve an item, it is sent up to you, the city council, for your final approval. There are five planning commissioners. Of course, I'm one. I was appointed by Ken Smith. Terry Beaver is planning commissioner who represents Rick Opitz Ward, Ward 3. Commissioner Larry Taylor represents John Alberts Ward, Ward 2. Commissioner Erleene Smaschler is from Nick Gerba's Ward, Ward 1, and Commissioner Robert Davis represents Michael McCarron's Ward, Ward 4. This year, we heard 27 requests on new construction and development issues. Four of those were requests for conditional use permit. One interesting one was a hotel owner out on I-40 who asked for a variance to build a 70-foot-tall sign. 70-foot-tall signs are typically not allowed in the city of Yukon, but we saw it differently out on I-40. There's a precedence out there for signs of that size that run to our breadth of the state, so we went ahead and voted to approve a variance for that sign that came up to you, the city council, and I believe you approved that as well. Last year, we approved one preliminary plat. We approved one PUD, which is a planned unit development. I believe that was a gated area at Stone Mill Development, first-class development in South Park Town. We had no issues with approving that. We approved two final plats this year. That's important, because that's essentially giving the okay for a new neighborhood to be built, so a very important thing here in town that we were closely associated with. We did six reverse lot splits. That's where two residential lots are combined into one large lot, typically to allow for the construction of a large new home. We approved six of those. We did one lot line adjustment this year. That was between two neighbors who were friendly with each other. It wasn't a problem. It had to do with sewer line and a lot, sewer line on the wrong side of the lot line, and we helped them solve that problem. It wasn't really a big deal. And finally, we heard five requests on rezoning issues. One interesting one was at Stone Mill, where we rezoned a commercial lot into a R1 residential lot, which allowed for construction of new single-family homes. Another case was on Poplar, where there was a lot that still was still zoned agricultural from, I don't know how long ago, we rezoned that into residential, allowed for single-family construction there. And the last rezoning issue I'd like to highlight is that the, I believe it's the Yukon Hills Shopping Center, there was a parcel out front which was zoned C4 Shopping Center. We rezoned that into C3 Commercial, and that allowed for the construction for the new RVest Bank, an important item in a town like this. And that's what your planning commission did last year. We were glad to serve and hope to serve in the future, and that concludes my remarks. If there's any...
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
And I appreciate your service to the city.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Item 3, consider approving the 2013 updates to the City of Yukon Emergency Operations Plan as recommended by the Emergency Management Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4, consider approving Ordnance Number 1295 and ordinance amending the Ordnance Number 657, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for Lot 1, Block 1, Yukon Parkway West, Phase 6, in addition to the City of Yukon, Canadian County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, and be changed from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C3 Restricted Commercial District, as recommended by the Planning Commission, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Opitz?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Item 4B, consider approving the final plat being a replat of Yukon Parkway West, Phase 6, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Gerba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Item 5, city managers' report.
These are information items only.
At the Mabel Fry Library, we have nine public computers that are available to the public anytime that the library is open. I mention this because at 7:00 AM Eastern Standard Time this morning, the Health Center Marketplace opened up for the United States. And for people that do not have access at their home computers or any other way, we have access to computers, plus Sarah and her staff have been practicing for some time about offering how to get around and to learn more, not only about the health insurance marketplace, but to also make sure that you have information available to you as you proceed to make a decision. We provide information only. We do not advise you as to what choice you should make or what choice is best for your family, but we do have that available, and the staff has been trained, and we are ready to meet the needs of the public of Yukon as it relates to the health insurance marketplace. We have, you know, we had a little lull that occurred in September. It was only a little lull, because we're all the time doing something in parks and recreation. But we start Saturday with the Check Day. It's a huge event for our community, and we hope that all of the public will take an opportunity to come out to have kolaches and coffee in the morning and continue eating throughout the day, and enjoy the parade. We anticipate that the bad weather of Friday will be gone, and that we will have beautiful weather on Saturday, and hope that everybody will come out and join us that day on Saturday for really what is one of the signature events in Yukon. Also, again this year, we have the tree giveaway. Jan has, again, secured several, well, 250 trees to be given away to the public. That will be on Friday, October the 18th, at the football field at City Park. We hope that you get there early. First of all, if, probably if you don't get there early, there won't be any trees left. That seemed, those trees seem to go pretty quickly, something that we'd like to do. Also, on the 18th, that same evening, we are having a movie premiere. The city has secured a movie screen, projection equipment, sound equipment for outdoor display of movies. We are starting with a premiere event, including the lights in the sky and a red carpet and popcorn and pop for a family event. Come on out on that particular evening at 7:30 and help inaugurate the new movie equipment by watching Hotel Transylvania with all of your family. Bring your blankets and your chairs and come out. On the 28th of October, we have the Mummy and Son Masquerade, also at the Jackie Cooper Gym. That is a great event to complement the father-daughter dance that we have later in the year. Also, then we get really geared up, because we start moving toward Christmas in the park. Tuesday, the 29th, we have Spooky Senior Social at the Dale Robertson Center. Friday, November the 2nd, we have the Patriot Project at Three Park Complex, the City Park, Freedom Trail Park, and Chisholm Trail Park, where we are assisted by a great group of volunteers from the Southwest Covenant School. They come out and do a great job, and it's a great event if you really want to have fun and enjoy doing some real community service. It's a great time to be at the park. I know, John, I think you've done that for several years, and it is really a lot of fun. Saturday also is the Pumpkin Harvest Craft Festival. Then, November the 23rd, we will kick off the Christmas in the Park season with the Chill Your Cheeks 5K Run, Kris Kringle Carnival, and the opening of Christmas in the Park, which will run for 41 days through the end of the year and through... in the Park, which will run for 41 days through, uh, the end of the year and through New Year's. Gentlemen, that concludes my report and I stand ready for your questions.
I have one. Are those the flyers you're gonna pass out?
Well, we have lots of flyers for all of them.
November the 2nd, it's, it's Friday, November the 1st, Patriot Project is, and it says the 2nd on here, so just FYI.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, the only, I was gonna make is if, you ran off a, a pretty long list. If people need information, they should just go to the Yukon web, website.
Absolutely.
And it's all listed there.
Absolutely.
Item 6, new business. Seeing none, item 7, council discussion. Councilman McCarron?
Isn't this a great evening to be here tonight, listen to all of the wonderful things that are going on? And I won't steal Rick's thunder, I'll let him, I'll let him holler about what a great place Yukon is, but to Kevin and all the firefighters, certainly I extend my hand. You know, we do have an excellent both police and fire department out here that I'm very proud to call our own. Uh, certainly I've been more than impressed over the years that I've been here and that's only 47 years. Uh, Jan and her staff always does a great job. And I guess something I'll put a little kudle out, when I was standing at the library this morning and they said that they were gonna have a program set up for health insurance, you know, taking a step forward. I don't know very many communities that are that forward-looking as we have been here with all of our folks. Uh, I do appreciate Bob coming tonight to give us a report from the Planning Commission because a lot of people don't hear from the other folks that come, uh, from the other committees that supply us with a tremendous amount of information. Uh, certainly I invite everybody to Czech Festival as well. And, uh, for, uh, Gayla Lutz and her folks that came up tonight and spoke about the Canadian Valley VOTEC, it really says a lot about our community, period. Uh, I don't need to flavor that, but once again, I'll also say, come on out, have a kolachi, they're really good. And, uh, I even know the best places if you want to ask me. Uh, I can even tell you where the best places are to go get one. So, uh, in that, that's it. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gerba?
Um, I've just got one, uh, one concern. And basically, I've been getting a lot of emails and, and phone calls. There's a lot of concerned citizens here in Yukon about a, uh, proposed rezoning project in Oklahoma City, close to our borders. And I, I just want to kind of applaud some of the people for getting involved. Um, even though they're coming to us with their concerns, there's not a lot we can do about it. Um, and I just want to kind of assure people that if there was something we could do about it, um, we would. But unfortunately, you know, beyond our borders, we don't have a lot of influence. But, um, I just want to applaud all the people that are getting involved and, um, bringing up their concerns to the, uh, Planning Commission in Oklahoma City. Um, it might have made a difference, but all I can say is, if you do have a concern, um, get out there and be heard. A lot of times, that's the difference between something going right and something going wrong. Thanks.
Councilman Opitz?
You heard all the events that's gonna be going on in Yukon. Now, what a place do we have here? What a community we got going on. But be here for the Czech Fest. I don't care what the weather is. It doesn't make any difference. You'll come out, you'll enjoy it, you'll have a good time, no matter what. Agreed?
Agreed.
Do you love Yukon?
Absolutely.
We love Yukon.
I tell you what makes me proud of Yukon is what you heard from Greg Winters tonight. Yukon, come together to help somebody else, another community, Canadian Valley VOTEC in El Reno. Come together and made things happen for them. That's pretty special. That makes me very proud of Yukon and all the employees that, that come together and make this happen. Takes all kinds of efforts from everybody to make those things happen within 60 or 70 days and you have school. Makes me very, very proud of Yukon and you should be too.
Mayor?
Councilman Alberts?
Amen, Mr. Opitz. And I tell you what, what you got tonight, we live in Yukon, it's a great place. We had the proof and I agree with you. You stole my thunder, but the idea that the community came together to help with the VOTEC Center is certainly proof that it's a good, it's a great place. And not only did we help the VOTEC Center, I know that the Methodist Church across the street, they got together, they provided backpacks for the kids over at Banner School. It is a great place. The other thing that I like is we heard new ideas about the movies tonight at the Cooper Center, helping with the health, was the health insurance marketplace, great idea at the library. But it doesn't stop there. I mean, our, our staff here is full of new ideas, but I also encourage the community. The community needs to be a part of moving our community forward. If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, but that also means we need your ideas, your thoughts, et cetera. That visitor section, when I sit over there where Mr. Smith is, I harped on it and I'm harping again. Come here and talk to us. Let us know. We don't know what we can change, what we can improve, what we can make different, make better. You know, I accidentally ran down a street the other night when I was jogging and realized it was crumbling to pieces. It was already on Arnold's Hit List, so what a great, but it didn't hurt to ask because then I confirmed that it was gonna be, it was gonna be fixed. But take the opportunity to let your council person know or come down here and talk with us, we're nice people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Alberts. And there may be some that would debate that last comment with you.
Most of us are nice people.
Um, I would like to give a shout out to a couple people that have already been mentioned, um, beginning with, uh, John Holt, owner of the, uh, old Chevrolet dealership and his willingness to accommodate a, uh, a group in need and our, our city manager and our Community Development, Development Department, um, stepping up and, and making that happen. That's a great benefit to those students. At the Technology Center, it's also a great benefit to the city of Yukon and I just want to, uh, give kudos for those efforts. Uh, as, uh, many have mentioned, uh, Saturday, the Czech Fest comes to town and we have so many people that work so hard to make this happen and make, make it such a tremendous event. It, it's certainly somewhere, if you have not been there, make it a point to come. If you have family or friends that have not been there, make it a point to invite them. It's a, a wonderful event and you will not be sorry. Of course, the Czech Fest kicks off, uh, the, the time of year that most people want to relate with generosity. Uh, we have, we have a city that is a very giving community, uh, that right down to the citizens, not just the city administration and departments, but right down to the citizens that live here. And, uh, this year, their, uh, this time of year, there will be more and more and more opportunities for us as individuals to give to those who may not be quite where we're at in position. Uh, whether it's giving of, uh, donation of food, donation of money, donation of your time, or a hug to someone that needs it. Uh, we have, one thing that has not been mentioned, I believe, the, uh, Sunday evening before Thanksgiving, uh, there is an event, uh, that I, appears to, gonna be taking event, or taking place at the, uh, Yukon Fine Arts Auditorium. That's gonna be a, uh, Thanksgiving event, not a dinner, not a, not a, uh, church sermon, but an opportunity to go and see some, uh, and, and be a part of an event that truly will make you appreciate, uh, what we need to be thankful for. And, uh, of course, we have Christmas in the park coming up. And I don't mind adding, for those of you who haven't noticed, I've already begun, begun my Santa Claus transition. Uh, I've got more white in it this year. I'll have to use less dye, but, uh, you know, I'm waiting to be called by the Grand Elf in case, in case he does need help, but we're gonna try to, uh, live Santa Claus this year. Uh, that being said, uh, I want these guys on this, uh, council to know how much I appreciate them and their efforts and I would like to adjourn this meeting.